I call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 17th, 2024. Please stand and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Platsner, please call the roll.
Commissioner Noblock?
Here.
Commissioner Noe is absent. Commissioner Heikala?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki?
Here.
Commissioner Geisler is absent. Chair Schwartz?
Here. Thank you. All right, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
Slow move.
Second.
Motion by Heikala, second by Noblock. Any additions or corrections? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any agendas on the agenda?
Oh, the agenda, sorry, I thought we were on the minutes.
The agenda is adopted.
Aye.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes of our August 15th, 2024 meeting.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Noblock.
I move that we approve the minutes with no changes from August 15th.
Second.
Motion by Noblock, second by Heikala. Any additions, corrections, discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now you can abstain.
Now I will abstain.
And the minutes are approved. Our first case for the evening is planning cases 24-25 and 24-26, the preliminary plat and site plan for Hidden Creek Woods, second edition, 1-2-1-0, 117th Lane Northwest, SPL Holdings LLC. Mr. Platsner.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Thank you, members of the Planning Commission. So, our first item tonight, planning case 24-25 and 24-26, is the preliminary plat and site plan respectively for the Hidden Creek Woods, second edition residential development project by SPL Holdings. This is at 1210 117th Lane, which is a temporary address. The property is an underdressed property on Zeon Street, just north of North Dale Boulevard. And the applicant did bring forward a very similar proposal to this, essentially this proposal minus a few changes back in, I believe it was April or May of this year. And they did end up withdrawing that proposal due to issues that they were having around the fact that the site abuts up to Sand Creek to the north and that they would need a variance and several approvals from the Coon Creek Watershed District, as well as their need to revise the FEMA floodplain or flood zone map of the property. So they did withdraw that application and have worked to get those issues resolved, and they resubmitted the application in September. So that is the application that's here before you now, and there are a few changes compared to what was submitted in April, but generally the project is the same. So what they're proposing is a 20-unit townhome and multifamily development on this property. So the property is zoned moderate-density residential. It's guided high-density residential, and this is something that is likely a holdover of an error in the map from when the 2040 Comprehensive Plan was approved. And I'm not going to be addressing this any further as part of this item tonight, but this is something that, just to give a little bit of history, in 2018, the city initiated an application to re-guide this property from high-density residential to moderate-density residential. And it's my understanding that that re-guiding did not get captured on the map that was approved in 2019 for the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. So when that plan was approved, the map was changed back to show high-density residential on the property. So staff are working with the Met Council right now to get that revised, whether that needs to be a city-initiated application with the Met Council or it's something that can do administratively. We're still working on that. Staff have no reason to think that would affect the project at all, but I just wanted to explain and give a little bit of background on why the zoning and the land use for this property are not currently the same. And a little bit more history on the property. The utilities, there are utilities already installed on the property, and with that, there is a deferred assessment. The city did pay to install those utilities, and I believe this was back in the 1980s when a development was proposed on the property. Those utilities were installed, but the development did not go forward on this section of the property. It's, I believe, part of the same development as the housing just to the northwest in that planned unit development area, sorry, the northeast in that planned unit development area. But it never went forward on this property. So there was a plan for development on this property back in the 80s, and there were utilities installed. And SPL Holdings, the current applicant, brought forward a plan back in 2018, I believe it was, that never was actually formally applied for, so they did not formally apply. So the applicant did bring this to city staff and had them review this plan back in 2018. The applicant applied in April and then withdrew, and now this is their second application. So hopefully that's not too confusing, but there's a lot of history on this site with plans that have been brought forward but not actually completed. So this is a three-and-a-half acre property. It's adjacent to Sand Creek and the Sand Creek Trail, which runs along the north and northwest side of the property. The applicant is proposing 24 sale units. The applicant has stated that they are open to renting some of the units out, to continue to own some of the units or having the eventual owner continue to own and rent out some of the units, but the plan is for all of the units to be for sale. And if all goes accordingly, that is what the applicant would like to do. The proposed density for the project would be about six units an acre, which fits in with the moderate-density residential land use and zoning. And the applicant is proposing three buildings. Two of them are eight-unit multifamily buildings that would be three stories, and the units would be back-to-back units. So each of those buildings would have four end units and four interior units. And those interior units would only have one wall that faces outward, and all of the other walls, the sides and the back wall, would be shared with other units. So in total, there would be eight interior units between those two buildings and eight exterior units. And then they're also proposing a four-unit townhome building. It's a two-story building rather than a three-story building. And all of these units would have two stall garages. The three-story buildings would have storage areas as well on the first floor. So up here is what the site plan that's being proposed looks like. You have the two eight-unit buildings on the east side of the property and the one four-unit building kind of in the central south part of the property. One access is being proposed off of Zeon Boulevard, and a fire lane is being proposed around the back of the eight-unit buildings, and this was, I believe, on request of the city's fire department. So they are proposing to put that fire lane in so that fire trucks will be able to access the back sides of those buildings if necessary. The applicant is showing 50 parking stalls, so that's two stalls per unit in the garages, so two covered stalls, as well as 10 common guest spaces elsewhere on site. 50 stalls amounts to two and a half stalls per unit, which does meet the minimum parking requirements in the MDR zoning district. The driveways themselves are also 20 feet long, so cars would be able to park in those driveways without hanging out onto the street. So although they are not officially designated parking spots, residents would be able to use their driveways to park their cars as well. So the issue of using garages for storage and then not having a place to park the car that's addressed in the site plan, even though, to be clear, were those driveways not 20 feet long, the parking requirements would still be met. So the applicant is proposing to have one access just on the Zeon Boulevard. They're proposing to keep the existing sidewalk along Zeon Boulevard for pedestrian access, and they are proposing for individual unit trash pickup, so they aren't proposing any dumpsters or trash enclosures, but they are proposing that each unit would have the garbage trucks come and pick up those bins individually. The applicant also has applied for a variance, which is necessary for their site plan to meet all requirements of the MDR district, and that's because a 20-foot setback is required for any interior driveline that's running parallel to a right-of-way to be from the right-of-way. So the interior driveline, and you can see kind of along the east side, along Zeon Boulevard, the MDR requirement is that that be set back 15 more feet than what's being shown. They're showing a five-foot setback for that interior driveline, and this is because the site plan did need to get pushed toward Zeon Street in order to provide that fire lane in the rear, and so they weren't able to meet that 20-foot setback for the interior driveline. Staff are supportive of a variance, a 15-foot variance to allow that five-foot setback, but that just needs to be approved by the Board of Adjustment, and it is scheduled currently for the November 7th Board of Adjustment meeting. So that approval of that variance is listed as a condition of approval for this project. As far as grading and drainage are concerned, this was a lot of what the applicant had to work with Coon Creek Watershed to correct. And Coon Creek Watershed has an easement that extends 100 feet out from Sand Creek, I believe it's 50 feet in either direction from Sand Creek, that the applicant is proposing to grade within, and so they did need to get a variance from the Coon Creek Watershed District and get approvals from them. In order to do grading within this easement, the applicant is proposing two stormwater retention ponds and one infiltration pond, all of the north and west sections of the site. And they're also applying for a letter of map revision from FEMA, and this is to redraw those floodway boundaries, and this was another one of those issues that stymied the application back in May. And they are working with FEMA to get that letter of map revision approved. However, my understanding is that FEMA will not actually issue that letter of map revision for an unapproved project, so staff are still working on the timing of that. And getting that letter of map revision approved remained one of the conditions of approval that staff are recommending for the project. However, the timing might not work out that they would be able to get that letter before the project is actually approved by council, because my understanding is that FEMA would not issue that letter for an unapproved project. So it's sort of a chicken-and-egg situation where one of these approvals needs to come first, and I believe it's the city approval. The applicant is also proposing impacts to wetlands up to 2,500 square feet of the wetland area, which is within the acceptable amount of impact per, my understanding, per engineering standards and Coon Creek Watershed District standards, though this is outside of my area of expertise, so I wouldn't be able to speak any further on where that actual 4,356 square foot maximum number comes from. So here's a map showing the location of the drainage ponds. Those are the one on the west and the one in the center, and then the infiltration pond on the east side of the site there. And then the red area here, you can see, is where the FEMA flood zone or the floodway zone is currently, and the applicant is requesting that FEMA redraw that line to no longer include that extension kind of to the south into where the eight-unit buildings are. Lastly, landscaping. I am proposing an update to the conditions of approval compared to what was in the staff report. In the staff report, I did include specific numbers for landscaping in the conditions of approval, but upon further review, the calculation that I did for landscaping was based on the open space calculation provided me by the applicant, but their open space calculation did include some areas of the site that might not be considered open space, such as the infiltration pond and the retention ponds. Thus, the actual number of trees that I had included in the conditions of approval are probably not correct. That probably will reduce that number somewhat. So I am requesting that the Planning Commission, if they choose to move to approve the item, use a different condition of approval for landscaping that does not include those specific numbers, so that staff is able to work with the applicant to figure out the exact specific numbers of trees that will need to be planted on site. So this is a map showing the proposed tree removals on site. So the applicant is proposing to remove 283 of the existing trees on site, and they're proposing to save trees on the west side as well as along Sand Creek of the site. So a lot of the bulk of the site would be having their trees removed. And then the landscaping plan that was provided by the applicant shows trees mostly along the edges of the site to the southeast and northeast where it abuts either Zeon Boulevard or adjacent residential uses. And then they would be keeping existing trees mostly along the Sand Creek side of the site. And then lastly, I did want to go over the building plans themselves. So these are the renderings and elevations that the applicant provided for the buildings. This is the two-story, four-unit townhome building. The front would have the garages on the lower level and then the bedroom spaces on the upper level. And there are options for buyers of these units to request a balcony on the top of the first story, on top of the garage, instead of a hip roof. So this might provide a little bit of, a little bit further variation between the units where some of the owners might have a hip roof, some of the owners might have a balcony in that location instead. And then there would be doors opening out to patios on the rear of the four-unit, two-story buildings. And then the back-to-back units, the eight-unit, three-story buildings would look somewhat like this, with garages, with balconies above them on the first floor, living space on the second floor, and bedrooms on the third floor in general. And the applicant is proposing black, white, and gray vinyl lap siding and vinyl board and batten siding, as well as black asphalt shingles, and they have indicated that the black, white, and gray are the colors that they would actually be going for. So these colors are not proposed to change. What's being shown on those elevations is the final color scheme. And then just going over the floor plans really quickly, for the three-story buildings, the garage would be the bottom floor as well as storage areas on the first floor. Living spaces, dining room and kitchen would be on the second floor, and then bedrooms would be on the third floor. Exterior units would have three bedrooms. Interior units would have two bedrooms. And then for the two-story building, the garage, living space, kitchen, dining area would all be on the first floor, and then the bedrooms, as well as a loft, would be on the second floor. We did receive one, or several comments via emails or phone calls ahead of this meeting. We did have several residents in the area note generally that they believe that the area currently is a natural area and the development here would destroy the natural beauty around Sand Creek. So that was requested that I convey that comment or those comments to the Planning Commission. And we did have one comment to provide some pictures that I believe they took of the area around the proposed development. And that's, I don't know what the picture on the right is with the turkeys, but the ones to the left and to the bottom show generally the publicly accessible trail along Sand Creek nearby. What's being proposed? I did keep track of all of the changes that I made to the conditions of approval between when I submitted the staff report and the presentation today. Most of these changes are minor. One of them already mentioned regarding the landscaping. I did remove pending before the engineering comments, because the engineering comments were provided and included in an email to the Planning Commission. And then I did change the language in the condition of approval around the FEMA floodway to reflect the need for a letter of map revision. And I believe those are the only substantial changes, but I did provide printouts of my proposed updated conditions of approval to the Planning Commission. So with that, city staff are recommending approval of both the preliminary plat as well as the site plan with a large number of conditions. And with that, that's all I have for our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Platsner. Mr. Platsner, this board goes up yours. Does this got anything to do with this case?
Yes, thank you. I apologize, I did not mention. That was provided by the applicant. Those are material samples for the vinyl siding as well as the roof shingles for the buildings.
Thank you. And, Commissioner, have any questions for Mr. Platsner?
Mr. Chair.
Before we continue, Commissioner Schmalki.
Mr. Platsner, can you go back a couple slides? There was one in terms of something about the buyers will have the option or a choice. I didn't, we went through that pretty quickly, so I wasn't sure what it is exactly. They get to have a choice of and...
Of course.
And where would that be?
Thank you, Commissioner Schmalki. So I don't remember which slide I wrote that on, but I can explain using...
I think it was right before the one that shows the samples.
Okay.
I think it was right there.
I think you might be right.
And I think then it went to the sample.
Yes, okay, thank you. So the buyers will be able to choose between, so on the, above the garage on the first story on the two-story buildings, what's shown on the proposal or on the elevations is a hip roof above the garage. Buyers will have the option to choose to have a balcony in that location instead. So in that case, some of these units would have that asphalt-shingled hip roof below the bedroom windows on the front of the building above the garage, and others might have a flat balcony with a railing in that location instead.
For the four-unit building?
For the four-unit building. I believe for the eight-unit building, the balcony is the standard.
Right, okay.
So won't that throw off, though, the visual of that? If like only one has a balcony, for example, and how does that affect future potential buyers, et cetera?
Of course. So whether it would throw off the visual, I suppose, might be a matter of taste, whether it's all uniform or whether there's variation. I personally feel like I could see advantages to either, but it would just be that some of the units would have more usable square footage than others in terms of a balcony that you could use versus just a roof area. I assume, though I don't know the difference in cost, I assume the cost would go up for buyers who requested a balcony instead.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. I'm more worried about, just again, the appearance, like, does it make it, you know, look awkward, right? If just only one, for example, takes advantage of that and...
I did, they did provide an example elevation that showed what it might look like with some balconies and some hip roofs, but I don't have it as part of this presentation. I can see if I can pull it up on my computer and provide that to you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Heikala?
Mr. Platsner, is it possible that you could go back and just kind of with your cursor or whatever, show where the balcony could or would go?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Heikala. They would be in this location, so if it was in the second unit from the left, my cursor is showing the location of the balcony, it would be right above the garage door. Or if it was on the furthest to the left, it would be in this alcove here, above that garage door.
So one or all four could...
Correct.
Commissioner, any other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Schmalki.
Would you also mind, Mr. Platsner, could you bring up the landscaping slide again to the question I'm having us, again, kind of in response to what the public commented about the trail, right? So were there any plans for any, I heard you say that they're going to keep most of the trees, which I don't really know what most of the trees really defines, is that is there 10 there now, so most means eight? Is there three there right now, so most means two? And then two to help with that kind of the, going along the trail, are there, were there any plans to like put in any low shrubs or things like that that kind of add kind of like a natural fencing, anything to kind of separate it from the trail? I just don't remember what was on the...
Thank you, Commissioner Schmalki. So 37 is the number of trees that are being kept along that trail area, and it's very light on this map, but the circles to the north of the dotted line along Sand Creek, those are all trees that are being retained.
Got it.
And the area of the dotted line is essentially where the site is being clear cut. So there is at least 25 feet, and in a lot of cases wider, strip between the northernmost area that's being clear cut and the northern end of the site, as is proposed. And staff are working with the applicant to improve the added landscaping, mostly along the north side of the site along Sand Creek. So something like shrubs or additional trees. Essentially, the applicant does need to add more trees to the site than is being shown here, and staff have guided them to put most of those additional trees essentially on the north side, along the Sand Creek side, to help maintain that visual buffer between this development and the developments to the north and the trail, and keep the natural appearance of that as much as possible. And the applicant has indicated that in an updated landscape plan, they would be showing more trees along that northern side.
Excellent. Mr. Chair, I do have, is that one more question, if I may?
Go ahead.
So the other thing was that five versus the 15-foot variance, right? How will that five feet be finished, then? Is that going to be turf? Is that, is that a sidewalk type? Is it concrete? Like, and if it's turf, is it going to be irrigated?
Thank you, Commissioner Schmalki. So there would be more than five feet between the interior driveline and the sidewalk itself. So I don't know exactly how many feet it is, but it would be continuous either, well, right now, it's proposed to be turf.
Okay.
Let me see. No, I'm incorrect. I apologize. It's proposed to be shrubs and trees in that area.
Okay.
So they would, the trees would be planted in that five-foot strip, and then there'd be a bit more of a turf buffer between the edge of the site and then the sidewalk that exists right now.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Platsner, concerning the fire lane on the north side of the site, is that going to be open and available to be used by residents, or will there be gates to, that the fire department would have to unlock, for lack of a better term?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I don't know the answer to that. The applicant might be able to speak to that. My impression was that they would be open to be used by residents, but the fire department may have requested that there be gates, which is often the case for fire lanes, so that residents aren't parking or using them. But I wasn't part of that conversation, so I might have the applicant speak to that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, any other questions at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Noblock.
I have a question for Planner Platsner. In regards to the creek, what is the, is there a pathway on the south side or on the north side? And also, what I'm leaning to is, what is the sightlines to the other side of the creek? What's on the other side of the creek right adjacent to this property?
Thank you, Commissioner Noblock. So the path is on the north side of the creek, and the path itself, the public path, is not on the property that's being proposed to be developed here. There is a grass pathway used to access the creek from the south side that would be maintained, but this is mostly for Coon Creek Watershed staff to access the creek for maintenance reasons. It's less of a public path, though I'm sure it has been used as such, but the actual paved public path is on the north side. In terms of sightlines from this site to the properties to the north, there are, there is a wooded strip that I believe, I believe it's owned by the city, but I'd have to check to be sure, along the other side of Sand Creek that is wooded as well. So there is some foliage buffering this site from the residential sites to the north in addition to what's being kept on this site and what's being, what will be proposed to be added to the landscaping on the north side of the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
One more question. Is there a planned turnaround for the trash vehicles to get through, sorry? Or is that still kind of being planned? I guess I'm looking at the, at the plan, and it doesn't look like there would be adequate turnaround for, you know, a truck to get through and be able to turn around then after collecting?
Thank you, Commissioner.
Especially in those between the two eight-unit buildings?
Absolutely. That is, that's still being worked out. So there is still a contingency in the conditions of approval that if the applicant needs to switch to trash enclosures or dumpsters for the buildings, that they still need to add those trash enclosures and have them meet all of the condition, or all of the conditions of the zoning code if the individual pickup does not end up being an option. The applicant is proposing individual pickup, and that's what they're hoping to do, but I don't have confirmation yet that that's something that they're going to be able to do, which is why we have that contingency.
And what will be the deciding factor?
I don't entirely know.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner, I'm wondering if Mr. Platsner can explain this dotted line up here. What exactly is that?
Commissioner Heikala, may I approach and get a closer look at the dotted line for hand?
No.
So that... That's showing the FEMA floodway, and I'll pull up a map that shows that. This dotted line along the north here is the floodway designated by FEMA, and it does extend into the building pads, which is why the applicant is... So that's showing the FEMA floodway, and I'll pull up a map that shows that. This dotted line along the north here is the floodway designated by FEMA, and it does extend into the building pads, which is why the applicant is requesting that line to be redrawn. And that line would need to be redrawn based on the proposed grading of the site rather than the existing grading of the site, which is generally how FEMA processes these requests.
And that's what the letter hinges on, right? Is this redrawing?
Yes.
Commissioner, any other questions before we move on?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Question for Planner Patzner. There are a lot of, there are a lot of conditions for this plat and site plan, and I wondered if you'd go over the main conditions and variances that are being asked of us, because I see them being referred to. I just want to clarify, are those that are what are being mentioned in all the conditions? Or is it something that hasn't been highlighted yet?
Thank you, Commissioner Knoblock. My hope is that everything that's in the conditions of approval has been discussed already tonight, but I will go over very quickly the conditions that I have, and a lot of these are standard. So starting with the preliminary plat, the park dedication requirement, that fee and lieu is standard. The deferred assessment, I did mention, though, that's related to the existing utilities on the property. The homeowners' association agreement requirement is something that was added to the zoning code earlier this year, and that's to make sure that for properties where lots are for sale, that there's an agreement to make sure that the owners of those properties have a way to maintain the outlot or the open space around those properties. So that's going to be a standard condition of approval going forward for any multifamily development. With the cross-access easement, that is, my understanding is that's standard as well, and just make sure that owners of the individual buildings or individual units are able to access their units, that there's no way that anyone could ever prevent them from crossing the outlot to access their units. The watershed item is also standard, and I just wanted to include that to make sure that we're not approving anything that does not get approved by the watershed. So basically, our approval is contingent on the watershed giving all approvals that they need to give. They've already issued variances. I don't have them, those approval letters in my hand, so I wanted to keep that as a condition. The letter of map revision I've discussed. And then for both the preliminary plat and the site plan, I included the condition that the corresponding site plan or preliminary plat respectively be approved, so that we're not approving one without approving the other. And then the variance, the only variance is the request for, the only city variance, not including those requested for the Coon Creek watershed district, is the request for that 15-foot setback variance for the interior driveline. And then for the site plan, most of these are standard. The site security agreement, engineering comments, sustainability comments, details of the children's play area, which usually is not provided at the site plan, at the time of site plan, but usually at the time of building permit application. The hedge was actually provided on an updated landscaping plan, but I did keep it just because it doesn't hurt to have that as a condition of approval and ensures that that hedge is not removed. And that's to block lights from cars parking in the guest parking spaces from shining into adjacent residences. The city code requires that bike racks be provided, and those aren't shown, so that's one of the conditions. We did not receive a photometric plan showing lighting on the site, so that's one of the conditions that will need to be provided before. Building permits can be approved, and those will have to meet all of the city zoning code requirements. I did talk about landscaping, and then the owner must maintain all waterway adjacent slopes. That came from the engineering department, and the signage condition is also standard.
Thank you. It was a big ask, but thank you.
All right, Commissioner, anything else right now?
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Heigle? Just something, it may be just something that I'm missing altogether, but what is the existing deferred assessment of 104,000 in some dollars?
So that's the city-installed water and sewer utilities underground on the site. I don't know the year, but I believe it was, it was in the 20th century. And the city did pay for those utilities to be installed, and then assessment was put on the site, basically requiring anyone who developed the site to pay the city back for those utility installations. The company that was originally planning to develop the site all that time ago did not do so, and so that assessment was deferred. That company was not able to pay. So the assessment was deferred, basically saying that anyone who's developing the site going forward would need to pay the city back for the utility installations.
Thank you.
Commissioner Casey?
Yeah. So does that assessment inclu, did I think that for some reason there's fire hydrants in that area?
Commissioner Casey, I'm not sure. This, this...
When you talk about utilities, you're speaking of sewer and water.
Sewer and water.
Inside. Okay, I have a couple other things. On the original recommendations of the proposed preliminary plat, so there's the $28,000, $200, which is standard with that rate, but in the narrative that we got, there was some reference to some $20,000 fee. Trying to think where that was. It was a different amount, and so I was curious.
Thank you, Commissioner Smokey. I'm gonna, sorry, Commissioner Casey, I'm gonna take a look and see what that number is, because I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the reference. I just had it. Oh, here it is. It's in, talks about elevations, phasing, signage, park dedication. There's a, for a total fee of, maybe it's just a misprint.
It's possible that it was based on, because they did come to the city back in 2018 and talked to city staff, it's possible that that was a number that was given to them back in 2018 and just had not been updated. But that's only a guess. I'm not entirely sure.
Yeah, and it's possible it's just a misprint, because the 14, 10 per unit and the 20 units is standard. And then I think, I don't know, it's just different, and so I wondered about that.
Thank you for pointing that out. I don't know exactly why, but that could be the case.
So when will be corrected? It's either the $28,200 or $20,200?
The number on the conditions of approval in the staff report is the correct number based on our current calculations.
Okay. And you had a slide up, Mr. Patzner, that marked the changes you made to these conditions, and I just wanted to note them. You gave us the news sheet, but you had a slide that...
I have that slide up right now. A lot of it was that some of the conditions were met, but I'm keeping them, and I just wanted to point that out. Updated plans met the conditions, but I wanted to keep the conditions. And then essentially, there was the letter of map revision, the FEMA letter of map revision, and then the landscaping changes.
Yep, that's the, that's the slide I was speaking on. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Heigle?
Mr. Patzner, can you tell me if there is a designated pet area and where the bike will be parked?
Thank you, Commissioner Heigle. There is not, right now, proposed to be a designated pet area, and we haven't determined yet exactly where the bike racks are going to go.
But there will be one.
There will be bike racks. The designated pet area is not a requirement in the zoning code, to my knowledge. If it is, I missed it, but I don't believe it is. So that's not something that we have been requiring. Usually applicants have been choosing to provide those as well as the children's play area, but it's not required like the play area is.
No, I understand they have garage and so forth, so they could put them in there.
They also have a terrific trail system right there, too, for pet exercise and stuff, but, you know.
All right, Commissioner, anything else? All right, the petitioner have anything they would like to add? Please come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record.
My name's Adam Fries. I live at 1201-118th Avenue Northwest, so just on the corner over there. Couple of questions, probably more for you, because you know more about what's going on with this.
Excuse me. Are you the petitioner?
Oh.
This is not the open mic, sir.
It's not the public hearing, yeah.
Trying to jump up too soon.
Yes, yes, you are. The petitioner, would you like to please come to the mic and give a presentation? Up to the microphone, please, and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Abdullah Veera. My address is 17665 48th Place, North Plymouth, Minnesota, and I'm one of the owners of that LLC. And, you know, first of all, thank you for this opportunity. When we envisioned this project, we wanted to make available affordable housing in the city of Coon Rapids. That's what is our aim. You know, along the way, we want to develop that land. That's what is our intent. Apart from that, we do not have any other conditions. We want to get this project going and complete it hopefully by end of 2025 and move out. That's what we are looking for.
All right. Can you address the fire lane? Whether that will be gated, so it's shut off to the residents, or whether the residents are going to have access to that?
I do not know. What does a fire lane means? If I, I need a little help so that I can answer that question.
So the engineer who's working on the project on behalf of the applicant was likely who was in the conversation with the fire department and would know the answer to that, and they are not here tonight. So it might be the case that there's no one here tonight who immediately knows the answer to that. I can get that information from our fire department, since that's who would have had the conversation. Their standards would be the ones that would need to be met by the site plan. So that might be information that I will have to provide at another time. But it would be based on whatever the standards of our fire department are, whether they're gated or not. That would be based on those standards.
Because I personally don't want the fire lane to be available, for lack of a better term, additional parking.
Understood, and I think it would make sense to take that into account and have that revised on the site plan, but I would want to have a conversation with our fire chief first to make sure that there's no reason why having gates on the fire lane would go against whatever the fire code is that requires a fire lane to be there. So I don't want to say for sure that that's something that we will have them revise, only that it's a conversation I can have with our fire department.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, you know, I do not know enough details to answer it, and that's why I was differing to the engineer.
Thank you. Commissioner Casey?
Yeah. Whichever one of you wants to address it, there's a little blurb on phasing, multiple phases proposed. Can someone explain what that is?
Certainly, ma'am. I can, I can explain that. Because of the uncertainty, economic uncertainty, we would like to start the project from one end and then complete it. Meaning, we would like to, we are proposing to complete the four-unit one first, and meaning first let's get the whole site graded and, you know, roads and all those things are done. But in terms of three buildings, we would prefer to start with the four-unit building first, build it, and, you know, of course, we are testing the waters with the market. If it is good, very soon we will complete the other two buildings as well.
Okay.
That is more of a flexibility on our side, instead of deploying whole capital one time. Can I start with one building and make sure market is good, and whatever product we are trying to sell has a good demand for it, then we will build rest of it.
Is there a timeframe attached to that, or just, when you say the end of 2025, that might be just phase one? You just don't know?
I don't, probably it is too uncertain to say, you know, if you ask me personally, phase one, we want to get it done in summer itself. We don't want to wait until end of 2025 itself. When I was projecting end of 2025, it is for the whole project. I was hoping for, you know, everything depend, all of us know everything depends upon the market. You know, if I can complete it, if there is enough demand, I would like to get everything done in 2025. That's what I wanted to project.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, one more thing.
Commissioner Casey?
On the maps, it shows the outlot that is labeled 21. Tell me about that. Who retains ownership of that? And there was talk, I caught some of what you said about nobody can cross over it to get to their own properties?
Thank you, Commissioner Casey. I can speak to this. So the outlot will be owned either by a private owner or by the homeowners' association that would be set up for the development. And that's standard for any multifamily development that has common property. And so we would have the homeowners' association documents written up so that when the outlot is no longer in possession of the developer, that the homeowners' association would take ownership of that outlot and be responsible for maintenance of that outlot, and that there would also be a cross-access easement to benefit the owners of the individual lots. And that would ensure that the outlot could never be, that those owners would never be barred from crossing that outlot. So essentially, that common area, the owners of those lots or of those individual units would always be able to access and cross the outlot in order to get to their units, in order to use the space around it.
Okay. So there wouldn't be restrictions, really, once it's incorporated into the homeowners' association?
Correct.
Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you. We may have more questions later.
Thank you.
All right, we need a public hearing in this matter, so at this time, I will open a public hearing for both the preliminary plat and the site plan. So we'll have one public hearing for both cases. Anyone who wish to speak to the public hearing, please come to the microphone. Give your name and address for the record. And limit your comments to three minutes, please.
Three minutes? I'll just keep coming back.
Well, one time only.
That's not how it works. All right. So my name is Adam Fries. I live at 1201-118th Avenue Northwest. A lot of my neighbors here are right along there. So we live on the north side of that where the trail is. What, two, three years ago, this Coon Creek came through there and destroyed and took out all the trees across on that south side. Not much trees left there. So where they're proposing to put this building in and say there's going to be trees left, the trees that are left, that they're going to remain, are not trees that you're thinking are big. They're little twigs that are got left. They gutted that area, and I'm not sure if any of you have looked at that. So when they say they're going to leave trees, you're talking about little trees. They're not big trees that are going to help block any of the view from these people across there. The other thing is with this FEMA flood thing, I walk that creek every day, twice a day, and I think twice this year already with all the rain that we had earlier, that water washed way up there, way up into that area. So if that's, if they're going to redraw those lines, how are they going to stop that? Does anybody got answers?
This is not a question-and-answer period, sir. This is for you to make, make your, state your position.
Okay. Well, that's my position on that, and it's, you're going to take away all that wildlife that's in there too already. So, and there, we need to think about that. It's already been decimated once a few years ago, and they cleared everything out. Now you're going to take that other area out for the animals and everything there. So that's my point.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Donna Carson, 11823 Zion Boulevard Northwest. I'm about two blocks from the creek and the trail. My concern is if this property is cleared out and graded and he wants to do a multi-phase project, what happens if that project never gets completed? All of those trees, all of that landscape is gone, and it will be years before it's... those trees, all of that landscape is gone, and it will be years before it's, it grows back. That's my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak?
You go first, Mike. No, no, it's all about you, Bill.
Hi, my name is Dave Jansen, 1221 118th Avenue Northwest. My question actually stems from a comment made by the gentleman who was here, where he was talking about if there is sufficient demand, the project will be finished. But the question I have is, what if there isn't sufficient demand? And so, if we find ourselves in a situation where before, sometime this summer, there's just not enough uptake, then are you considering what happens to the rest of that property? That's my concern.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bill Carson, and I live at 11823 Zion Boulevard as well. I don't know, I've lived in the neighborhood for 34 years now, and in the late 90s, we had a developer who came in and wanted to put in the townhome development just down west of where I am. And what has struck me about all the conversations here tonight has been, we were told a lot of things about the last development that was coming in, and the developer agreed to, he agreed to a lot of different things, but when I got right down to it, he came through, he clear-cut everything, and I don't understand what the repercussions were that, what happened there. I mean, he just took all the trees, even though we had an agreement ahead of time that he was going to leave the mature trees. So I really don't understand what, we never had any recourse. They were just gone. And now we're looking at this situation here, which is somewhat similar. And as my neighbors have mentioned, and as Adam had mentioned, that floodplain area where they came through and they did redo Sand Creek, in the years that I've lived there, the water in Sand Creek, it would get chest-deep. It was flooding so badly up Sand Creek itself, until they came through and they did this work. It hasn't flooded since, but as Adam has pointed out, they, they did all these cutbacks in there where the water actually does backflow up into this land that these gentlemen are wishing to work on. And I have the same question of what's going to happen, if, what happened to all the planning that went into that for Sand Creek in the first place, if we're just going to go ahead and take that away? So, that was my comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work, Bill.
Anyone else who wants to speak to the public hearing?
My name is Andrea Bavacqua. I live at 1231 118th Avenue Northwest. I guess my concern is basically, it's, I don't know, it sounds very redundant, but I know this is not a question and answer. This is just my concern here is, I guess what I'm not understanding here is, as far as like the wetland credits, where is that supposed to be repurposed? My other question is in regards to the trees, the mature trees that are back with the privacy of our neighborhood. That's like one of the important things as well, to me, is that where, if the trees, to repurpose them with shrubs, I guess, I don't know. I'm not, it's just not clear to me, like where the repurposing is. I don't know. It's all the trees. And that's exactly what my neighbors have mentioned. That's exactly what is happening. It, when the water flows, it's high. So, it's just there. That's all I really have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak to the public hearing? One final call. Anyone who wants to speak?
My name's Jerry Rockhold. I live at 1291 Northdale Boulevard. Right now, I'm over on the lot to Sand Creek, so I'm on the, be the south side of the creek there. And I've been renting there for 14 years off of a lady that, her name's Connie Larson, and she got the letter in the mail, or she emailed me about this going on. And I never really got any information on where it's actually going, but I'm sort of curious to see where all this is, so I didn't get a little map or anything like that. I just can't believe there's enough room in that area for them to do this, because I always thought that was for wildlife and all that stuff going on there, and erosion, all that stuff. The drainage on our side there all goes to one spot, over to Zion there. So all that stuff will run that side, all runs to one drain there. Our parking lot floods out every year. So I hope, you know, I don't know if I'm planning where you guys are actually doing this. I think there's going to be a lot of thought to be put into how to take care of that. They thinned out the trees like these guys said. And it looks great in the summertime. Wintertime comes, you can see everybody's house. There's big, like you said, it's just all little saplings now. And the only reason I've stayed there, my apartment there faces the creek, and I got all the wildlife. So, I don't know what I'm going to be looking at. So, I probably will end up moving, you know. It depends. And I'm also concerned about that, too. Like you said, too, with that creek going there, is there going to be access from one side of the creek to the other, if somebody plans on putting a bridge over? So now we got people going across, you know, from one side to the other, you know. The place that I live at's been really secure. All our neighbors stick together, watch over each other's stuff. Never had any problems over there. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak to the public hearing? Last call, public hearing? We'll close the public hearing, limit comments to the commission. Commission, thoughts, concerns, ideas?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Smolky.
Okay, I'm going to try and kick this off. I got probably a few thoughts going on here. First of all, I do want to thank the public for coming in and, and raising your comments, your concerns. It is very helpful. I, I'm reading through, and again, Mr. Pastner, too. It's like you, you did a great job detailing all the, the conditions that have to be met, and, you know, did a great job presenting, you know, some specifics around those. As I'm listening to it, though, I'm, I'm genuinely concerned that this proposal is, is not ready. I feel like there's a lot of unknowns, a bit of ambiguity. I'll speak to the landscaping for example, you know, in the presentation, which is why I asked the question. We talked about, you know, that many of the trees will be saved, right? And it's just not definitive. I know that that, that creek area is very precious to a lot of the people in the community, and I think making sure that, that the landscaping requirements that we have in our code, I'm not asking for anything above and beyond, but it should be well-defined, so that it's, we as the planning commission know what we are approving before we approve it. So, for me, it's like I would, I would prefer to have something a bit more specific, to know just how is that, that visibility to the creek. And, you know, even if it's not, obviously, we can't replace full-grown trees, okay? If those have to come down because of the development, we know that that's, that's something that the property owner is entitled to do. But we do need to make sure that then the landscaping that is put in in place of some of those trees they removed, that it does help to, to build a nice landscape, right? And I'm just unclear what that is going to look like, and it, it does feel a bit, you know, ambiguous to me. I feel like, too, the, the trash removal is still a question, in terms of like if those trucks can't get in and out effectively, that can change this plan, right? You know, the roads might have to change, or the placement of where those, those trash containers will end up, we don't know, right? And the fact that there's no playground, you know, drawn into this, I have no appreciation for how close is the trash, you know, if they do have to go to the single trash site or a couple trash sites, where's the playground relative to that? I just feel like there's enough missing components that I'm not really comfortable giving or recommending any approvals tonight. I feel like that maybe there needs to be a bit more work done, and maybe brought, come back to make a full presentation.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Hecla?
I tend to agree with Commissioner Smolky. We heard several people stand up here and say that in previous things, this has been promised, this has been promised, this has been promised, but it hasn't come to be. And we need to have the citizens, when the city says something, we have to have them believe that it will happen. So, I'm tending to think that a lot more thought needs to go into it, and there needs to be a much more specific, specificity, is that the word? As what, is what's going to happen. So that's
Anyone else?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I too have, yeah, thank you. I, too, have some, some questions about this. One thing was whether this is going to be rental property or homeownership. Is that going to affect the, the kinds of garbage pickup? That's not clear. If it's going to be one site, or the, each unit will have its own container? I guess that, that is, that's a lot of traffic in and out. Hadn't thought of the play area, but it's, it's not well-defined. So, we, we would want to recommend some, some information, I guess, to come back to us. I would second that, or third it, whatever it is, to get a little more information.
Can I talk to Max for a minute?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Smolky?
One, I guess, one thing on the elevation, too, I guess, in that floodplain line. Maybe it's in the elevation, and I just didn't see that clearly, that, that's been addressed, so that that line can be redrawn, or if that still needs to be addressed in the elevation. So that's another piece that I didn't feel was clear, as whether or not that's been resolved or not.
I think that was the part of the letter from the FEMA, that can't, can't come until after the entire plan's been approved.
Until, so we don't have it specific yet again. Yeah, it's not complete, but.
At this, at this time, let's take a five-minute break until Planner, well, I guess we won't Mr. Pastner, anything you need to add, or would like to add at this time?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. The applicant did share with me a trash pickup route that they had been working on, that I had not seen yet, that showed the way that the garbage trucks would circulate on the site. One item is that that pickup route does use the fire lane, and so would require that the fire lane not be gated off. So, I would need confirmation from the fire department, that the requirement from the fire department is that that fire lane not be gated off, in order to be sure that that trash pickup route would actually work. So that's, that's something that I, I wouldn't feel comfortable presenting in front of the planning commission quite yet. But, the applicant does have a draft trash pickup route, that if, if the fire lane is not to be gated, basically has the garbage trucks cycling throughout the site, and they would never need to back up.
They, they would have a need?
They would not need to back up.
Oh, I see.
So that would include, apologize, but that would include then the, the street or the, between the two eight-unit buildings? They would have access to that fire lane, then?
It looks like they would be picking up at the entrance to that little road, rather than actually going down that road.
And so, I would like to see in the drawing then, where that proposal is, that they would put the individuals, you know, if they're bringing it, because now you're talking about possibly taking up parking spaces, or is there, well, I see there's three parking spaces there. It's like if all those units on the interior, so it's units nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. If the, if the truck is going to just stop at the end of that, where would they, what kind of space would the, would those units be given to place their trash units? And you've got, you know, eight units there, you've got 16 trashcans when you're doing recycling plus trash. That's a lot of containers. So, I, I guess my question to staff is, is whether or not we can, is it reasonable to ask for an extension on this, to have them come back with, with answers to these questions?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bucicconi?
Commissioner Smolky, we, we talked about this possibility today. We try to plan for all options on a project. And there is time remaining on the 60-day rule here. We would have to extend it. So if you wanted to postpone a decision to November's meeting, there is time to do that. I'll add that, I think, I'm not great at math. They don't, they don't teach that in law school. But I think you could, we could even go to the December meeting if needed, but, because we can extend it up to 120 days, as long as we notify in writing.
Chair Schwartz?
Okay, so, because according to our paperwork, the 60-day rule, most approval denied by November 8th.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bucicconi?
That's accurate, unless we notify in writing, and then we can get it to be a 120-day rule.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Knoblock first?
I'm sorry.
Chair Schwartz, thank you. Commissioner Smolky brought up wonderful points, as well Commissioner Hecla and Casey, which I agree with all of them. I would like to see a great, I know there's an elevation map or plan, but I would like to see more specificity on the elevations of the lot in question. But that kind of leads me into my main point is, this is Plan 24 and 25 is the preliminary plat, and the 24, 26 attached to it is the site plan. And I will, I'm wondering, do we need to separate these, or extend both of them, the 60 days? Because I think the site plan is where the core of the issues remain, if I'm, if I'm understanding it correct.
I, I believe we would just extend both of them.
All right. That was my question.
And Commissioner Smolky?
Don't remember my question. Oh, no, I remember, sorry. I just want to make sure we're clear, too, then, to the public, then, that the public hearing wouldn't be extended, correct? That's been opened and closed, so, just in case.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bucicconi?
I believe the public hearing has been held and done now, yes.
Thank you.
And just a comment that I would like to add here. I'm not real comfortable with the comment that the petitioner made about phasing this in, and just starting with the four-unit. Because as it was brought up by some of the citizens, what happens if things aren't beneficial, then we're sitting with a unfinished, totally unfinished site. So I, I would like to have, to include more definitive assurances that the entire plan is going forward, as we bring forward the plan. Mr. Pastner, it looks like you might have a comment?
Chair Schwartz, thank you. Yes. So, and this is something that I, I want to comment on, but I, I don't want to, I want to discuss this with our Public Works Department before I do entirely, because we do collect a, a letter of credit for projects like this, so that if something were to happen and the project were not to be completed, the city would have the funds to either complete the work on the project or restore the site, so that we wouldn't be left with a half-completed project or a clear-cut site with nothing happening on it. But I can't speak to the specifics of exactly what that letter of credit can be used for, or how we would go forward with that, until I have a conversation until I have a conversation with our Public Works Director about it. So I do want to point out that that is something that we do and that's part of the process and how we maintain assurance that we're not going to have a site that becomes clear-cut or becomes blighted because it was not able to be finished. But I I would want to be able to speak more on the specifics of of how that would work in order to give you that assurance.
Thank you. Commissioner Casey.
Yeah, is that is that separate from the site security agreement that is standard with the city? That's separate?
Commissioner Casey, yes, it is separate.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hecla.
Mr. Plasner, is that a significant amount enough to complete?
Commissioner Hecla, I believe it is 125% of the cost of the improvements to the site, not including the buildings themselves, but the basically the grading, installing streets, utilities, things like that. So it is generally sufficient to either complete that work or or restore the site, is my understanding.
What's the commission's?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey. Excuse me, Smokey.
In planning case 24-25 and in planning case 24-26, I'd like to make a motion that we table both cases until the November or December, whichever is applicable. Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
And Mr. Bucicconi, is that ambiguity?
I'd just say let's go with November and we can always make it December if needed at the November meeting.
Perfect.
So you're amending it to just.
Amending it to be the November, thank you.
And I will second the the amendment.
We have a motion by Smokey, second by Casey, to table this case to the November meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. So the case is then continued or tabled to November meeting. You will not receive another public notice. But as has already been stated, the public hearing portion of this case has already been open and closed. So there will be no further public comment. But you're more than welcome to come and attend and listen to the meeting.
Always welcome.
Thank you for your input here this evening. All right, the next case for the evening is planning case 27, excuse me, 24-27, the comprehensive plan amendment, low-density residential and very low-density residential. Mr. Mr. Plasner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. So I have before you a city-initiated item, which is a request to update the comprehensive, the 2040 Comprehensive Plan to.
Excuse me, could you please take your conversation outside? Thank you.
Be right back, close that. Thank you, Mr. Bucicconi. The to update the comprehensive plan so that we can reduce the floor on the density range for low-density residential to allow for more flexibility to develop housing at a low density, single-family housing at a low density on smaller infill lots or otherwise constrained lots. So what's being proposed is to reduce the floor of the low-density residential land use designation, which is currently three to five units per acre to 2.25 at the bottom and keeping five at the top of that density range. So 2.25 units an acre to five units an acre. And the impetus for this was the Cardinal Crest development, which was an 11-unit, single-family home development on about a four-and-a-half-acre lot that was below the minimum three units an acre threshold for low-density residential at about, I think, 2.45 units an acre. And staff realized that while meeting the low-density residential zoning code requirements, there would be pretty much no way to develop a lot of that shape or of that size and still meet the three units an acre minimum. So staff are proposing to lower that minimum to allow for for more flexibility for lots like that. So this would affect the future population projection for the city as well as the minimum density as calculated by the Met Council. However, we would still be above the minimum that the Met Council allows for an overall density for the city. On top of that, we would also propose to create a new category in the land use section of the 2040 Plan called very-low-density residential. And this would not apply to any properties at the outset, but would be available for a property to be re-guided to if it is so uniquely constrained, uniquely small, uniquely difficult to develop that it needs to be developed at less than 2.25 units an acre, down to at the lowest one unit an acre. And this is something that we would basically just hold in reserve so that we would not have to update the comprehensive plan again should a development like this come up. And we would, the staff would basically propose to use that very-low-density residential designation sparingly and and ensure that the city is never brought below the minimum density threshold as allowed by the Met Council. And so these are the two changes being proposed, as well as changes in the comprehensive plan to the density calculations for developable properties, which basically is the calculation that the Met Council does that would show what the overall density of the city would be if every developable residential property developed at the lowest allowed density. So that would, that number would go down, but would still be above the threshold that the Met Council allows. And we would also reduce the projected population of the city in 2030, 2040, et cetera, based on that change in density. And that's a relatively small change. And I I kind of brought it up already, but the impetus for this was the Cardinal Crest development that was not able to meet that three units an acre minimum for the low-density residential land use. And the city has been working with the Met Council to be sure that what's being proposed here is something that meets the Met Council's standards. It's something that the Planning Commission would need to make a recommendation for, the City Council would need to make a decision on, and then the Met Council would need to give their approval as well. I did pull up some relevant land use policies that I thought would be benefited by what's being proposed. And generally, I'm mostly talking about taking blighted properties or properties that are otherwise not being used to the the best of their potential and finding ways to develop them. And by adding this flexibility to the low-density residential land use designation, more of those properties would be able to be developed. So for example, the Cardinal Crest development was formerly a, I think, a dilapidated, single-family home on a on a four-and-a-half-acre lot. Redeveloping that into 11 units as opposed to just keeping that one house there does help meet some of the land use objectives and the land use policies in the comprehensive plan. So with that, city staff are only recommending a motion to recommend approval of that comprehensive plan amendment based on the finding that the amendment is consistent with other policies in the 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Plasner. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Plasner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
I apologize, but can you help me understand again, then, what would the conditions be that would qualify for a very low versus low? And would there be a way to combine it still into the low density? And just give that clarification, that's.
Thank you, Commissioner Smokey. The reason why we would not want to combine that into the low density is because there are actually properties that are guided low density right now. And if very low density was combined with low density, then the new floor for all of those properties would become one unit an acre. And the Met Council would not approve that because it's too. However, if we keep that low, very-low-density residential land use designation essentially in our back pocket, if there is a property that has a really unique circumstance where it can't even meet that 2.25 units an acre, that property on its own could be re-guided to very-low density without affecting the overall density floor of the city because it wouldn't affect all of the other properties that are guided low density. And thus, on a case-by-case basis, the Met Council would be able to approve it where they couldn't do it if it was a a uniform change. Hopefully that helps that make sense a little bit.
It does, as long as I just understand that it can be used fairly. I guess was the question I was leading to is, you know, what would the condition be that would allow us so we don't negatively, you know, right? Choose when to use it, when not to use it, or.
Thank you, Commissioner Smokey. So the the Planning Commission would need to make a recommendation of approval and the City Council approve re-guiding of a property. So changing it from low-density to very-low density would still require a public hearing and public input. So there would be no administrative changes and it would go through the same process.
Thank you.
And.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
Mr. Plasner, this Cardinal Crest is the project over on East River Road. That light bulb came on. I wasn't placing that right away, but that's the on the west side of East River Road that we recently dealt with.
Correct, and my fault, I failed to mention that, but yes, that's the right one.
Okay.
Commissioner Hecla. Would these proposed changes individually come up like to the Planning Commission or to the City Council or?
Commissioner Hecla, if if using the very-low-density residential designation, yes, each one would come to the Planning Commission and the City Council. For remove, for lowering the floor for low-density residential, that's just a thing that happens to every low-density residential property on the city, in in the city. And that has, that's what what's, sorry, I apologize, I'm explaining this poorly. Though both of those are being requested right now, but for very-low-density residential, it would it would need to be, the the change in the land use map would need to be requested for each individual property. Whereas for lowering the floor for low-density residential, that's happening all at once.
Any other questions?
Maybe you're relevant, but is Cardinal Crest actually working right now or is it actually in progress?
They are planning to begin grading in the spring, I believe, so no. They're still working on some of the I'm not entirely exactly sure where they are right now, but I believe they're planning to begin grading in the spring. And I think part of why they've missed this this season, this for for groundwork is because of their issues getting the sewer permit approved by the Met Council and that was due to being below that low-density residential floor.
Is that the sewer connection that crosses East River Road?
It's.
It's got to go from the west to the east side?
Commissioner Casey, it's it's not that specifically. The Met Council does have to sign off on any new sewer connection at all, any new residential unit that's being connected to the sewer. So they would look at that land use designation when they review a sewer permit.
Anything else? All right, we need a public hearing and this matters. We'll we'll open a public hearing in planning case 24-27, a comprehensive plan amendment for low-density residential and very-low-density residential. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing and limit comments to the commission. Commission, thoughts?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Smokey.
In planning case 24-27, I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment based on the following finding, that the proposed amendment is consistent with the policies of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan.
I'll second it.
Motion by Smokey, second by Knoblock, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed. And Ed Motion carries, and this is a recommendation by the Planning Commission with a decision by the City Council at their November 6th meeting. All right, our next case is planning case 23-17, a site plan extension for Coon Rapids Strip Mall at 2825 Coon Rapids Boulevard Northwest, Hung Lin Architects. Mr. Plasner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners. So our process for or I don't want to say our process for, our standards for a site plan approval is that a a site plan approval is valid for one year and the applicant would need to have their their building permits approved within that one-year window. And if they don't meet that one-year window, they can request that their site plan approval be extended by another year. And then they would have two years overall to get their building permits approved. In December of 2023, the applicant was approved for a site plan for a strip mall on Crooked Lake Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard to replace the old BP that's currently located there. And they did not move forward with applying for building permits within the year, generally because they were working on getting their drainage on-site correct. And they've been working with the Engineering Department on making sure that the drainage on-site is sufficient. And that's something that they are able to do without modifying the site plan and needing another Planning Commission and City Council approval. It's just something that they, it's been taking a long time for them to do. So based on my conversations with the applicant, the plan for the applicant is to move forward with building permit applications in the spring, once the drainage issues are completely resolved. But in order to do so, they would need their site plan extended by another year. So they brought forward a request for an extension that would need to be a recommendation of approval by the Planning Commission and then an approval by the City Council. So this was what was originally proposed as a five-unit commercial strip mall in that location. From conversations with the applicant, it sounds like they are considering subdividing it further to have six or maybe even seven commercial units in that building. Doing so would not violate any of the conditions of the original approval. I did just want to provide that information as an update to the Planning Commission. But they would would be doing so next year. So this is in the Port Campus Square zoning district. And their their site plan would would run out of validity, would expire on December 5th, 2024. So the applicant is requesting that it be extended to December 5th, 2025, give them the chance to finish working on the drainage issues on-site and apply for their building permits. So with that, staff are recommending a motion to to recommend approval of that extension based on the findings that the use is still consistent with the Port Campus Square zoning district and that the project continues to meet the the applicable city code standards pending the approval by the Engineering Department of the final drainage, stormwater drainage on-site. So that's all I have for you, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Plasner, have they already removed the gas tanks off that property?
Commissioner Schwartz, I believe they have not already removed the gas tanks. I don't think that they've done any demolition work at all.
Isn't there a requirement that those must be removed within a certain timeframe?
Chair Schwartz, I am not aware of that requirement. That might be something that I.
Mr. Bucicconi, is that something you might be able to respond to?
Yes.
If you would, sir.
I don't recall the timeline, so don't quote me, but I do think it's a year of unused and we require removal of the tanks. The commission would recall the Hanson Gas Station that's faking for a little bit there. And there's a process we went through to get those tanks removed as well. But as I understand it, the applicant's looking to move forward and and take care of it themselves.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, anyone else with questions for Mr. Plasner?
Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
Commissioner Hecla.
Mr. Plasner, this was approved originally on December 5th, 2023, correct?
Correct.
And now we're requesting an extension to 2025.
Correct, thank you, Chair, or thank you, Commissioner Hecla. So that means that the the site plan would now expire on December 5th, 2025, instead of on December 5th, 2024, which is when it would expire if this extension is not approved.
And did I, was I, did I hear you correctly in saying that they could still request one more extension? No.
No, no, they they can only request one extension, so two years would be the maximum.
Okay, because I'm just a little bit concerned about that very busy corner, unattractive as it is, sitting there for another year.
Understandable, thank you. I I don't I don't know that I have a response to that other than that it's, you know, they would have another year essentially for that site to sit that way. My understanding is that if we if we did not approve this, we don't have anyone else. My understanding is that if we, if we did not approve this, we don't have anyone else who would be moving forward with this site. So I don't know that, that that blighted gas station would, would be removed either way. But with this, we actually have someone who, who is proposing to remove that and replace it with a, with a higher-quality use. And so staffer of the opinion that, that this, what's being proposed here going forward is a quicker and more efficient way of removing the blight on that site than if we were to leave it.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Casey?
So, Mr. Platsner, when you talk about maybe expanding from five tenants to maybe six or seven, nothing on the outside dimensions change. It's just going to be interior cutting and pasting, so to speak.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Do we have any motions?
I will make a motion.
Commissioner Casey?
Thank you. In planning case 23-17, a site plan extension, I move that the Planning Commission recommend approval of a one-year extension of the site plan to the, December 5th, 2025.
Sorry, second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. And add motion carries. This is a recommendation by the Planning Commission and a decision will be made by the City Council at the November 6th meeting. Anything for other business?
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I have a few things for other business. First, I wanted to quickly go over what we have already for, on the docket for the November agenda. And then I would like to, if, if it's all right with the commission, quickly go over the draft work plan for 2025 that I have, that I would like to bring forward at the November meeting and get any feedback or recommendations for that now so that I can have a finalized draft to be approved at the November meeting. So to start, I did, I did want to go over the work plan really quick. And I provided that in an email and paper copies, but it was not included in the, in the agenda. But generally, city planning staff would like to continue bringing forward items to update and refine the zoning code in 2025, as we have in 2024, mostly at the beginning of the year. There are some items from the 2024 work plan that we did not get to, that we would like to continue on to the 2025 work plan. And the majority of the 2025 work plan are items that have already been discussed by the Planning Commission here and there. But just to go over very quickly what I have proposed already. Generally, we would want to look at adding requirements for development agreements for residential and commercial developments such as the Hidden Creek Woods development. And we've been, in practice, requiring development agreements. But having something in the zoning code that actually requires that would be beneficial to city staff, as well as updating the park dedication fee collection language to make sure that it is legally defensible and that there is a nexus between collecting that park dedication fee and the actual increase in use of parks, actually explicitly stated in the zoning code. So that's one item. We'd also like to streamline the use tables. Currently, the commercial, industrial, and residential use tables and the Port District use tables are, they have different uses listed in them, and we'd like to combine those into one large use table to make it easier to understand where different uses are allowed. City Clerk's Office is working on a universal special event permit. And zoning, or planning staff would like to include language in the zoning code around special events permitting outside of the Riverdale District, which is the only place right now where we have special events permitting. City staff would like to explore updates to minimum parking requirements for residential and commercial uses in cases where we might be requiring more parking than is realistic or necessary or less parking than is realistic and potentially looking at just updating that for the modern day. And those, those are the major changes that I'm looking at for, for 2025. So if anyone has anything that they'd like to recommend adding to that work plan, I think now would be a good time to do it, but we can also discuss it at the November meeting. Thank you.
Has the park dedication fee ever been increased?
The park dedication fee is increased based on, I suppose, based on inflation, like at small amounts at a time. But we are actually looking at making larger increases based on the park dedication fees that peer cities collect. We're, we're kind of on the low end in terms of how much we collect. And so there are, there are ordinances in other cities, neighbor cities zoning codes that we could kind of take bits and pieces from to defend increasing our park dedication fee a bit more than we have been. Okay. Looks like that might be it for that one. I can move on.
Sounds good to me.
So at the November meeting, there's a request for a lot line adjustment or subdivision exception and a lot split on Dakota Street by the river, along, along the Mississippi River. That's a request to take the lot lines for the three properties that you can see on the left and adjust them so that they would look like the three properties on the right. And the goal of the applicant would be to remove the existing single-family home on Lot 2 and replace it with two homes, one on Lot 2 and one on Lot, or one on Lot 1 and one on Lot 2. And I'll go over that more next week, but this is something that is in the MERCIA zoning overlay. So we will be discussing the MRCCA or Mississippi River Corridor Critical Area a little bit with this one. And then Curt is working on this. We'll be bringing forward a zoning ordinance around cannabis retail and cannabis production. So with the upcoming implementation of the state statute to allow cannabis retail and cannabis production on a state level, we are planning to update a modified version of a model ordinance that would allow the city to more strictly regulate cannabis retail than what the state does to regulate it. So we'd be bringing that ordinance language forward at the November meeting for the City Council to approve in December, because we should have it adopted before January 1st of 2025, when the state statute language supposedly does go into effect. So that's all I have for the November meeting. And then just a couple of updates on, on things that are happening around the city. IDC automatic expansion, they did submit their building permit application. So that's on Coon Rapids Boulevard by Holly Street. They will be going forward with their expansion. They're, they're working on the building permit applications right now. Furniture and things in Coon, on Coon Rapids Boulevard are in the process of being converted to the office building for ABC Exteriors, which is a residential and commercial roofing company. So they're, they're who's kind of moving into that building. And then I got a lot of questions on this by council members and just people asking, so I wanted to just bring it up. Mandarin Buffet in Riverdale, they are planning to reopen as Superstar Buffet. That should be happening soon, so their time being closed is about to be over. So that's all I have for you. Thanks so much for your patience, this kind of relatively long Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Commissioners, anyone have anything for other business?
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Third.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmalki. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.